If I could have your attention, please. Like to welcome everybody to this town council meeting on January 25th, 2024. And let's have a call to order and rule call. Sandy Sturgill.
Here.
Mary Hansen.
Here.
Alana Courtney.
Here.
Bill Goldsmith is here, Larry Tuning.
Here.
Beth Justice.
Here.
Marjorie Austin.
Here.
Having a quorum, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Today is really for the purpose of special use permits and ordinances. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Having no discussion, take a vote. Marjorie Austin.
Yes.
Beth Justice.
Yes.
Larry Tuning.
Yes.
Bill Goldsmith says yes. Alana Courtney.
Yes.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Sandy Sturgill.
Yes.
All right. Now, the first item we have is the public hearing to allow the miniature pony on Kent Street. Do I have a motion to enter into public hearing to consider the application for the miniature pony?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
What?
Who?
Marjorie.
Marjorie.
Marjorie. All right. No discussion. Sandy Sturgill.
Yes.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Alana Courtney. I say yes. Larry Tuning.
Yes.
Beth Justice.
Yes.
Marjorie Austin.
Yes.
Okay. Now, the first item here is a presentation by staff. Mr. Costin.
Ms. Mayor, Members of Council, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing held on the authority of Section 2204 Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Necessary notices have been made and the necessary adjacent property owners have been notified. The application this evening, 2023 Special Use Permit Application 04, is a request by the applicant Marty Hart to offer permission to allow for the keeping of a miniature pony at 301 Kent Street, which is a residential dwelling within the R1 residential district consisting of 1.26 acres. The entire property, except for the one garage, is enclosed by white wooden fence. The tax property identification map number is 20A223. The use of the property is residential with accessory structures. The adjacent uses are the, to the north, the Rappahannock River and then surrounding residential uses. There are no environmental concerns that are apparent on the property. The town's code permits such a use with a special use permit, provided it's private stables for the keeping of horses, ponies, or other livestock for personal enjoyment and not as a business. Provided that any building for the keeping of the animal shall be located at least 100 feet from any side or rear lot line. The Planning Commission, after a public hearing held on December 12, 2023, voted and recommended to the town council that the application be approved, subject to the conditions that were before them. Staff has revised those conditions in accordance with the commission's input in consultation with the property owner. So if I may, I'll walk through this very quickly. The first condition that would be recommended for imposition with the granting of the permit is sort of a restatement of what the request is for. It's for one miniature pony. Again, the statute, the code requires that you have to have at least one acre per animal, so that's met. So it's just kind of restating those limitations. There's also an understanding that this is just for this owner of the property. It would not transfer down and with the title. So again, this is essentially a restate, a statement of the request with some limitations. The second condition is relatively standard, which is that all local, county, state, and federal rules, laws, and regulations concerning keeping of animals be adhered to. Now, the third condition is one that the applicant and I kind of did a little revision on. It's on a daily basis, pick up the droppings and place those in a closed container until removed from the premises. And we added that second sentence there, that those collected droppings would be removed at least once every other week. So we have that addressed. Number four is basically maintain the existing fence, which I noted earlier. Now, number five, this came out of the planning commission meeting. There was a letter of concern regarding this, that it's in your packet as well, that the pony seems to draw some attention sometimes and that attention's not wanted. So the erection of a privacy fence at the southern end of the property is recommended as a condition. Now, that was, as I said, that one kind of came about during the planning commission meeting. The area that this really addresses is along Obert Street and then north along a driveway. That's more of a, that's not really a stable, it's more of a feeding station. And I think the applicant will mention that, which kind of provides, when we go to the condition number six, she'll speak to this, that the animal is actually housed off-site a lot of times in inclement weather. And then finally, there's a standard condition that if the conditions are not maintained, the permit is subject to revocation. We have received no comments in the office either for or against. Be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Questions, Sandy?
I have no questions.
Can I make a comment? And that is, the planning commission, the planning commission did not require Marty to build a six-foot fence. She volunteered to build a six-foot fence, and I just want to make that clear.
Alana?
Yeah, I just have one little comment. And that's, that horse is darling. And I was walking around one day and I went, I had, I don't remember what I had, but something that horses could eat, and I went to put it over the fence, and he came to me and he kind of bit me. So I just wanted to know, is there some way that if children go by there and that happens, I mean, somebody could get hurt, so.
I'd have to defer that to the applicant. I'd be happy to take any questions that I can answer, but that's one I'd have to defer to the applicant.
You didn't have a big enough treat.
Maybe not.
But they don't know how to feed a horse. All right. Moving on, Larry? Beth? Marjorie?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Marty Hart, your presentation?
Yeah, I'm going to keep this short and sweet because I think we have other things on the agenda tonight that folks might want to talk about. I just, first off, really appreciate the time and the consideration of this. Teddy is, has become, I think, a very important part of the town as well as my life. Alana, to answer your question, that is something, any sort of pony or animal has, when you feed it something, can nip. We've talked about actually putting up some sort of sign, and we're thinking about how we do that when we build the new fence, so that, you know, I don't want to put an ugly warning thing up, but what we will do is make it so it's aesthetically pleasing, but also, you know, people need to know. That is, all animals have that, have that risk.
I wouldn't want someone to give him something that would hurt him.
That's, that's the other part of it, to make sure nobody's feeding him. You know, he'd eat candy, but I don't really want him to do that. So that will be one thing that we will be doing in addition to the fence. Teddy is in his winter retreat right now. He goes to miniature horse farm. They have probably 20, 30 horses, so he gets some extra socialization during the winter. That's for his own safety, you know, like the weather, cold weather we had this week, things freeze, power goes out, heaters could stop working, and so we don't, we don't keep him here in the winter. If we were here full-time, all the time, every day, perhaps a different story. So we do that, and then in the event there was a hurricane or something like that, the place where he is currently staying would come and pick him up and take him to the farm, so he's off of, off of the water because of where our property is located. So that is, that is really the summary of what I have to say. Again, I really appreciate the time and, and thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Marty.
When it comes to the public comment, we have Mike Sheffield, if you would like to step up as a supporting comment. I'm pleased to say we have no one opposing.
Good evening, Mike Sheffield, 290 Marston. Just as Marty said, the horse has kind of become a staple around here. I visit it when I walk, I talk to other people that visit when they walk, and I'm speaking in favor of it because as long as people respect their property and the animal causes no problems, and as long as it causes no problems for the town, then it should be approved.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, we've given the opportunity. Nobody has any questions. There's nobody in opposition. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, it's been moved seconded.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion at that point? All right. Marjorie Austin.
Yes.
Beth Justice.
Yes.
Larry Tuning.
Yes.
Bill Goldsmith, yes. Alana Courtney.
Yes.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Sandy Sturgill.
Yes.
All right. Now, with the public hearing closed, I need a motion, I would recommend, per the recommendation of all the people that have gone before, a motion to approve the application for the miniature pony.
Can you read the, as it's, read the 2023, how it is on the sheet, please? Because it includes the stipulations, the names of the stipulations.
Do you want to read that, Marjorie?
Move to approve 2023 SUP Application 04 for Marty Hart and Sean Hackney, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report before us this evening.
Do I have a second for that?
A second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right.
Just one, one item because of the issue that was raised, and I understand what the applicant is saying. The conditions before you are just those that are printed before you? Did you want to do a quick draft on one for signage?
No, I don't think so.
I mean, she could come back.
I mean, she's going to do it.
The question is, is would we have to come back and do it?
If you do it now, you don't.
That's, that's my thought.
Then how do we amend that?
A friendly amendment to accept an additional condition, number, give me just a minute, please.
Eight.
Actually, seven becomes eight. A new number seven would be, and I just crafted something, erect signage to caution or educate on feeding process.
Okay, so amend previous motion to erect signage?
To caution or educate on feeding process. That, that would become number seven, and number seven becomes number eight.
And so now we need a motion to accept the amendment, correct?
Okay, I move to accept the amendment.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I'll second.
All right. Motion moved seconded. Sandy Sturgill.
Yes.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Alana Courtney.
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Tuning.
Yes.
Beth Justice.
Yes.
Marjorie Austin.
Yes.
Now that we have the amended motion, we have to reapprove the motion as amended, correct, Ted? So I have a motion to accept the, go ahead.
I move to approve the motion as amended, to accept the special use permit of Marty Hart.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
And third.
And third. Marjorie Austin.
Yes.
Beth Justice.
Yes.
Larry Tuning.
Yes.
Bill Goldsmith, yes. Alana Courtney.
Yes.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Sandy Sturgill. All right. Now we move on.
Done.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Yay, Teddy.
Yay, Teddy, that's right. It's a big yay, Teddy. All right. Next item on the agenda is one that's a little more heated. This is the public hearing for the small-town burger application. Making sure I'm in the right spot. Do I have a motion to enter public hearing to consider the 2023 SUP Application 5 for Small Town Burger?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on entering the public hearing? Having no discussion, let's take a vote. Marjorie Austin.
Yes.
Beth Justice.
Yes.
Larry Tuning.
Yes.
I say yes. Alana Courtney.
Yes.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Sandy Sturgill. All right, we are now in the public hearing. First up, presentation by staff, Mr. Costin.
Again, good evening, and again, this is a public hearing held under the authority of Section 2204 Code of Virginia, 15.22204 Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, with necessary notices having been given. This application is identified as 2023 Special Use Permit Application 05. The applicant, Jay Wilson, who is the operator of Small Town Burger, requests permission to locate and operate a restaurant with outdoor tables and seating on property, commonly referred to as Town Green, which currently is vacant. The restaurant will use as its kitchen a mobile food truck, have restrooms connected to town water and sewer, and have seating for approximately 30 patrons at outside picnic tables and individual chairs. Will also have four fire pits and overhead electrical lines of lights. It will be similar in design to the applicant's operation in Kilmarnic, and some of that is actually depicted in your, in your packet. The property is further identified as Tax Map Parcel 20A18G, and the zoning is B1. All the adjacent uses to the north are residential, the remainder are commercial. There are no identified environmental concerns. As far as compliance with the other zoning provisions, most of these are related to bulk or measurable requirements, setbacks in such which are not required in the B1 district, so essentially you can go wall-to-wall. The rest of the report, I kind of like to, and let me say, just both of these reports were primarily done by Mr. Com, and I've done some editing, what I like to refer to as Teditting. But I have actually, you know, we've, the bulk of this work has actually been done by Mr. Com. So I'm going to pull the next few paragraphs down into two summaries. One, the restaurant. If you look at the definition of a restaurant in the county code, excuse me, in the town code and the town ordinance, you'll see that there's, it says, including among other establishments, cafes, tea rooms, confectionery shops. These are examples. They're not necessarily a limited to list. They're just examples. So the food truck kind of fits into that, that definition within, within our requirements. So there had been other opportunities for food trucks to be used in the area. They would be considered, like many other establishments. They are, and much of what I'm about to say now is really in, from conversations with the Health Department, they are food establishments. They, in talking with the folks at the Department of Health, it's food establishments, and you have categories under that. And depending on the type of preparation that's involved, there is more inspection and whatnot. There's a grading system of one to four. If you're graded down as a one, that means it's a low risk. You get inspected once a year, and on up the line to there's more processing, there's more raw material processed, that's a little bit more riskier, that's a four. This particular use, based on the Kilmarnic operation, is a two. So the, and also in talking with the Virginia Department of Health, and I'm not taking sides here to, you know, I just want to let you all have the information, they were very, very complimentary of the operation in Kilmarnic in terms of its cleanliness and cooperation with inspections and whatnot. Moving back down to the report, there are provisions in the town code regarding parking. Those, that's, I understand that's an issue. We all recognize it as a problem, but it seems to be a problem that has been allowed in the past, and you kind of have to factor that in as you allow future uses. The, there are no other actions or proposals I think would cause any violations of the zoning ordinance. Now, historically, the Historic Architectural Review Board held a hearing before my association with the, with the town November 8, 2023. They have authorized the awarding of a certificate of appropriateness. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on December 12. The vote recommended to the town council that the application be approved, subject to the conditions that were before them. And again, in this situation, staff's done a little bit of tweaking on those. So let me walk through the conditions. The first one, again, kind of restates what the use is, the hours of operation, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM for the spring, summer, and fall months. So the 11 to 8 is winter, 11 to 9 is spring, summer, fall. So again, it's a restatement of the, of the use with some limitations. Also, six days a week, except if the weather is not conducive to, to the operation. The standard condition, number two, regarding compliance with all rules, regulations at all levels of government. The next is to limit the amount of noise and light disturbance, and in so doing, what was proposed was a 40-watt limit on light bulbs, maintain the property in a clean, oily matter. Now, the condition number five, that first sentence that's there, which is connect to the town water and sewer, that has been there. But if you made the application, it says it's semi-permanent. The applicant has advised me, he says, I have to take it off at least once a year to get it inspected. And when that occurs, it needs to be, those connections need to be capped. So that second sentence has been added in since the, since the planning commission meeting. The sixth sentence is basically, the sixth condition is basically just to restore the property to its present situation, should he ever vacate. And then seven, as I've noted before, relieves of parking requirements. And then eight is the standard, failure to abide subjects, the permit to come back before council for revocation. Now, in your packet, there were a couple of letters of support, and then today, we received at the office, as did you through email, three communications generally favorably, though a couple did note some, some reservations, some, some questions. All those have been put into the public file. Be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Questions, Sandy? And this is a Ted's presentation, not?
Right. The letters that you received today, the emails you received today, you said you had three from local residents.
Yes, yeah. You all were, they were actually sent to you. You all, you all got this.
One makes sure other people here knew that the residents approved of it.
Did you say those were favorable?
Yes.
They, for the most part, they were favorable. There was one that was questioning more the Historic Architectural Review Board, but...
The aesthetics.
Yeah, the aesthetics piece, yeah.
Do you have an answer for that? I got the same email.
I have, I have, I was not here for that process. I would have to say, just, that, that's, that's been done. It's been addressed.
Been taken care of.
Yep.
One just question, when you were talking about Class 1, 2, 3, or 4, and this would be Class 2, I know you had told me that Class 2 would mean that it would be inspected by the Health Department twice a year. You didn't state that.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Just want people to know that.
Correct.
Class 4 would be four times a year.
Correct.
Okay. One of my questions was, as a, if it was a mobile food establishment, or mobile food unit, they would be required to have an off-site commissary. Is there any relation to that, to what has been discussed, or is the commissary basically the food truck?
I would, I would think it is. That's not something specifically, I brought it with VDH, but I would defer to the applicant when they make their presentation.
Marjorie? Yeah? Larry? Yes, yours? I'm good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Costin. All right. Presentation by the small-town burger folks. Mr. Wilson?
Hello, all. Thank you all for tonight and considering us be part of your town. I've done a few different presentations for, you know, a couple of different levels of this process to come through. We did Harb, and then we did the planning commission, now we sit in front of you guys in hopes of getting approval for it. The, the business, do I need, I'm a little confused because it's my first time, like, really presenting a full, do I need to do a full presentation, or would, I didn't really...
I think it would be...
I mean, once you see the packet, I can...
Because some of the, I know I was at the, I was at Harb, I was at the planning commission meeting, but it would be good for the people that weren't there to get a good, basic understanding of what you're about.
Perfect, okay. What am I about? Well, I'm a mobile food unit, I guess we would say, that we were talking about. Placed in, so basically what I've done is I've created this beautiful, hardscaped, landscaped environment with high-end furnishings, outside handwashing station and dog bowl, we're dog-friendly, high-end pillows to tables, to chairs, great music, great lighting. And I say great, like, so it's background music, background vibe, you know? It's a family location, it's a family business. These are my boys that are my partners in this expansion, so I'm so fortunate to be able to be part of that with them and grow into multi-generational type of business. That's the plan. I'm, you know, the business itself is high-end burgers, lobster rolls, dogs, we call them malasadas, it's a Hawaiian donut that's, it's part of it. Very small, tight menu, sugarcane sodas, you know, in bottles, because we're kind of in a tight setup with just the trailer itself. We have cornhole, we have, provide bathrooms, not that any of this is necessarily needed because the, we're not building any structures, so there's no thing that says we have to. Basically, we're running the property, and we're just doing major improvements to the landscape and the vibe for the town. The bathrooms will be used for, like we use in Kilmarnic, for public, they can all use it, we actually encourage it, because anybody who comes through has to walk through our business and see what we're about, and it's not, they're not super high-end, you know, built-out bathrooms, but they're a high-end porta-potty, kind of like something you'd find in a nice wedding, if you went to a wedding, something to that effect, or a nice boat or an RV. It's kind of in that direction. We have them, everything's done, maintained with a service universe. We have servicing and taking care of, making sure everything's clean and fresh. I'm all about, you know, maintaining and maintenance of the facility, look, feel freshness. The Health Department obviously enjoys it. I'm all about the community, creating a vibe for the community, the energy. I love, I love being part of it. One of the reasons why I don't want liquor and beer and wine, a couple of reasons, but one of them is, I want people to eat and live around the town. Part of my, my plan is that we're part of the town. We did a big Christmas tree in Kilmarnic this past year for, like, the town for Christmas time, that was like really great, it's just fun stuff to create energy and bring community together, inspire, and have families come in and enjoy. So it's a very family-oriented, high-end, like I said, when I say like high-end quality, like, pay your furniture, you know, I would never buy, like, I couldn't afford to buy it for my house, you know? Like, it's super nice stuff. I think the mayor could attest, anybody who's been there, it's just, I want, what I do appreciate and do, like, when I went to Kilmarnic and now I would love for here, I want to blow away your expectations. I'm, yeah, I'm in the business of food and fun, and my goal is to provide both and create some energy. I'm going to have golf cart parking, I know that because it's got a golf cart. So I want to do things that help excite and energize the town. I'm a big marketer. I like spending, I like working, collaborating with councils and businesses. That, that's what I bring, that's what this is, and it's very consistent. We stay open, it's hard, you know, it's say to weather permit, but we try even when it's rain or sleet. This is not a hobby for us, this is a career, a job, a business that we need to make so we can, you know, have a nice life and continue to grow it. I want to create more happiness in the communities. I mean, that's how I look at it. So that is, in a nutshell, what a small-town burger is. It's, you know, it, it's fun and family and food. And that's what I want to help bring to this town. We really love this town. We, my kids went to Christ Church, my wife works in town, at Isabel Horstley. We're very good, you know, we're friends with the Dews and the, and the Horstleys, and that, the property that we're in actually right now is, Kilmarnic is theirs, this property is theirs. We want to, you know, keep this all together, keep, you know, building and creating and just something fun and vibrant. That's what I have. That's who I am. That's who we are.
Okay. All right. Let's go with questions for the council. Marjorie?
Do you plan on applying for or seeking out alcohol licensing for?
No.
For the area?
No.
I'm wondering about your ADA. Do you have it planned out for people in wheelchairs or walkers?
Sure. Okay. Because we're not a, we're not building or constructing any kind of building, we're not too ADA, we're, we're not held to do anything ADA, because we're not really building or constructing anything. Everything is mobile, moving, even the bathrooms and so forth. What we, what's done in Kilmarnic for people with handicaps or wheelchairs and so forth, typically friends or family are helping them get to a seat, a nice comfortable one with the back on it, and, you know, sturdy and all that. We can, so that's one, that's typically what happens. And nobody, I haven't had any complaints, I've been opening a year, actually today was the year that we opened over there. So it's kind of fun. But they typically help, we also have online ordering, we bring food out to the cars if they, if they require, they ask. We also have a mobile hand unit that we use, that we can take orders if somebody gets to a table, and they have trouble, they want, you know, order out there, we'll run out there and take care of that. So I, I set up the business, because I've been a restaurateur, that's just what I do. Even though it's a food trucker. I'm all about like, the hospitality side, so I spend, I have all the technology stuff going with it, to make it a little bit easier. That's how we handle it.
Thank you.
Larry? Sandy?
No, I understand it's pet-friendly, and, you know, the kids can come, bring their dogs.
Oh, man, love the dogs. Little automatic dog bowl Phillips, which is, and it's high-end, it's like what you'd see at a real high-end park, you know? You can see, I think I put prices in there, I don't know what I put.
And I also heard you made really good milkshakes.
I hate to say, this location, these, we don't do the milkshakes, because I don't have the space. It's not something that's an hamburger, old, it's a prior life, we'll say. But you should know, things, you know, we're looking at some other cool, like gourmet popsicles, maybe something like a key lime pie and some of, you know, and something, different kind of vibe, but today I don't have this. I'm sorry. I hope that doesn't change your voice.
Jay, the questions that I had were more kind of technical.
Sure.
And one was, as I was doing research on how this whole thing worked and.
Sure.
The conditions for food trucks or mobile food units versus restaurants.
Yeah.
And one of those questions was the extent to which by being a semi-permanent mobile food unit, are you, are you held to the same standards as our local restaurants? Or are the standards lesser in some way?
So the question asked earlier was about the commissary kitchen.
Yeah.
Mine's a self-contained full unit, so I don't need a commissary kitchen by, take that, you know, by, that is.
CDH doesn't.
Right. They don't, this is what we require by. And, you know, having connections to water and sewer, town water and sewer, allow me to help facilitate. I have a grease trap that we run through.
My next question.
Perfect. I'm all about like.
Didn't want.
Do it right, but no, no, I don't want anything. I want everything to be good. I have a picture of it on my phone, I took it, I was like, somebody's going to ask.
Look at mine, look at mine.
Look at my grease trap.
But we don't want to go into our sewer system.
Understood. I, that would be the worst for me. So it's a self-contained unit. Am I held to the same standard? Yes. You know, I need, you know, my, my staff, I'd actually tell you a little further, but I always wear gloves, we constantly change our gloves, I buy, you know, Taser gloves every week. We're, we're big onto hygiene, temperature, time, temperature, hold, you know, I've got to have date label, I've got FIFO, I've got to have everything that a restaurant would have. When that inspector comes in twice a year, sometimes more, he says that, but, you know, I guess that's the minimum. He pops by because he sometimes gets a burger, and I'm flattered by that. But he's looking for all those things. And I'm, my background is really high into hygiene, because clean is food. If you don't have clean, people don't come to you very, they're not going to. You eventually go out of business. So you have to be very structured, and I'm very structured with that, so.
I think the, one of the concerns, citizen concerns, you know, citizens talk to council members and whatnot, was whether it was creating an unfair kind of, unlevel playing field. Are the restaurants held to one standard, but a food truck is held to a lesser standard? Is there, are there shortcuts associated with that? I'm not hearing that.
It's, because there's not that. There's restaurant, you know, restaurants, you know, look, I've owned restaurants, so I know the other side of, of the other side of a restaurant, okay? There's building, maintenance, different air conditioning, all, all mine's more condensed. I, I don't need as much staff on to put out the same kind of product, but my menu can't be as vast as a, you know, having alcohol and beverages, that would require a lot more trickiness to it as well. It could be done, but it's not, you know? So am I held to the same? Yes. If they decided to do it differently, they absolutely have, and they shouldn't hold me bad because I don't, I'm not building a structure to have to be held to their ADA. I've been held to ADA when I, you know, had brick and mortars. But I created something that, that provides relatively the same thing, but without a lot more bureaucracy added to my plate. I mean, just as honest as day is long. But am I held to the standard? Yes. And do I, you know, care about every little detail? Yeah, because I, I want people to feel good about what I'm doing. Because ultimately, you know, they're, my success is their success, you know? If everyone's happy, they love what they're getting, and they feel great, that's it. So if they feel unsheltered in some way, they should look internal. They shouldn't look at me, I'm not, I'm not doing anything wrong. I've only done things right. And I've actually done it, one would say, a little bit higher. So.
Okay, thanks.
I can't, I can't.
When, when you were originally started out in Kilmarnic.
Mm-hmm.
You moved around a bit.
Sure.
Until you found your, your spot. So now that you're at your spot, it stays there, only to be moved for inspection.
Yes.
So you're not, we may.
No, you're not going to come.
You're there one day, and then you're going to be down in Deltaville.
No.
Selling hot dogs. And we're having.
No, you're not, you're not having any spot, no. In fact, I've bought a second trailer as well, that's going to be mobile. So I'm going to have the one that's here, and I have one in Kilmarnic, but I have one that, you know, maybe goes to Matthews, goes to other events and festivals, catering and events. And so people love this business that I have, and they want to have a big party at their house, I can roll up in a small-town burger and provide them that service. So the one that's here is here. And it's actually, it's brand-new, I mean, shiny, beautiful. It's, it's being worked on. I'm hoping you guys approve, because I'd like to have it by end of March. So.
Okay. Larry, any questions? No, just, okay. Any other questions? Alana?
You're going to be closed one day a week?
Tuesdays.
Okay. You'll be open Sunday, Monday?
Oh, yeah. Those are busy days, because a lot of people are closed. I don't know why, but they just decide to do that. I love those days. They're actually my bigger days.
All right. Now we're moving on to the public comment section, and we're starting with those that are in support. A B, you're up. On the public comment, we want to limit this to three minutes, you'll get a hook and a gong at two and a half minutes.
I may be grabbing, I'm the owner of Lansdowne, which is probably the closest house to this establishment. So when it first came up, I had some concerns, and Amanda had Jay come visit me at Lansdowne. He spent an hour and a half or two hours talking about everything, and the plans, and the layout, and everything. And he convinced me, for the benefit, and Amanda did too, for the benefit of the town, trying to grow business and bring people into town, that it was a good thing to do. So I stand support of the, of the operation. I had concerns about lighting, noise, parking, and all of that, and he assured me that the lighting was going to be, wasn't going to be shining in my windows, and, and the music was not going to be as loud as some music in town when they're having events. Usually, usually if the half shell or something, they would, if they're doing things, it was always on a Friday or Saturday night. And, and I've gone acceptable to that, if they're trying to make a business too. So I, I had no objections to it. So I think it's a good thing. He's assured me that he's got the best interest of both the Northern Neck and Middlesex County, and he's a long time, he's committed to a long-time relationship with both sides of the river. And so as it stands now, I, I'm, I'm in favor of the project moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sheffield?
Jay, can you lower the microphone down? Thank you.
So the main reason I wanted to speak in, in favor of this business tonight is, as many of you know, several years ago, I fought the town to try to start a business here. And fought, and fought, and fought, and fought, and fought. And I don't think that should be the case, unless, you know, even if, as long as what somebody's trying to do is legal, meets the basic standards, imposes no imminent threat to the well-being of others, that's what we're here for. That being said, I did, because I've seen a lot of, all of us love reading what's online, lots and lots of concerns, so I reached out and I talked to people that have worked for his location in Kilmarnic. I spoke on the phone with the applicant today. I wanted to know firsthand what was going on. Heard nothing but positive things from former employees. Asked questions about how he staffs. One of the things I liked is he staffs, he works the younger people because no ABC license, so they can have, a 15-year-old can have a job. He works short shifts, so you're not working your 15-year-old nine hours, things like that. The accessibility of public restrooms downtown, well, I don't think I have to address that, everybody understands. I have been to his establishment in Kilmarnic several times. It is as clean as I've ever seen. And that's basically it. I, as long as somebody's not presenting a detriment to the community, and since our historic folks have said, yes, this is good, the owner of the property says, yes, this is good, the neighbor says, yes, this is good, unless somebody can present me with a legitimate, this is going to be bad for our town statement, I'm going to be in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to speakers in opposition. Sarah Kimball.
My name is Sarah Kimball, I own Something Different here in town. Many of you know me, know that I'm an avid supporter of any and all businesses and events in Urbana, welcoming with open arms any restaurant, shop, et cetera, that joins us in town limits. You also know that I've been, always been in favor of food trucks at our events, to make the experience as exciting and fulfilling as it can be for those attending. So I understand that this is a shock to a lot of people. I'm only offering comments this evening because I was unaware that the Planning Commission had held a public hearing in regard to this application in December. So consider my thoughts as longtime business owner and operator as you move forward with your decision-making process. I feel that we need to bring a business that will provide a product, that will have the ability to draw visitors to Urbana, and not take away from the already established restaurants that we have. We currently have four places in town to get a burger, five if you count the market, all within walking distance of the proposed small-town burger. This town can only handle so many eating establishments, as our businesses, as your businesses who are currently here go through rough seasons. If you want to bring in another food establishment, bring in something that will have a positive impact on business, and have it embody our town by filling one vacant brick and mortar storefront. My other concern with bringing in Small Town Burger to Urbana is how does it fit in with us? We've talked about diversity, where is that? I feel like with this particular case, I ask you to step back and look at how this will pack the already existing restaurants, the appearance and character of Main Street. Now with that being said, if and when Small Town Burger does come to Urbana, I'll be welcoming and supportive, as I have been to all the other businesses. Just because I don't feel that it's a good fit for town does not mean that I will not be any less accepting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, Russell Buxton.
We should just say it in my microphone, maybe.
Yeah, could you add in my microphone?
She can spin it, yeah, she can spin it.
Yeah, perfect.
As you heard, my name is Russell Buxton. I'm a fairly recent transplant to Urbana by way of Newport News, Virginia Beach, and Lancaster County, part of which was in Kilmarnic. When Northern Neck Burger opened, I applauded it, and all of my friends applauded it, and it was a wonderful place when it was in a permanent building. When it unfortunately burned down and moved to, next to the liquor store with the patio. I've only been there twice. I go back to Kilmarnic to take care of things, and in the late evening, I, not real late, but when the sun was in the west, I stopped there on the way back, and the sun was blaring down. I had cataract surgery today, but I couldn't read the menu, so it didn't seem like a place I wanted to get out into the heat, even under the, the awnings, because the sun would be slanted, so it would still be there. And the two buildings around it were blocking the breeze, so I didn't go in. Now, I love food trucks, I like Terry's Place over there, Rocket Billy's, Autobahn went over there for takeout when we were building bird houses, and it was great. But I don't think it's appropriate for Urbana. Urbana area goes back to the 1600s, the actual town of 1700s, and that smacks of permanent and stability, not temporary. Now, a food truck, truck has wheels, can go, it's not permanent. And so I vehemently think it's out of place there. It would not be out of place over by the swimming pool. In fact, it would be very much in place. I think it's necessary to be there. Now, I speak of ignorance, I just found out on social media about the OK, and I was appalled. And then I read the comments, and I was appalled further. I thought, nobody's going to buy this for historic Urbana, they're going to be up in arms. And then I looked, and all the young people were saying, yay, 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 go ahead, we need something like this, we need those hamburgers, we need more food service business. And then there were a few oldsters like me that agreed, and it just seems totally out of place with our architecture. And it just seems totally out of place with our architecture, our history. And there was a third point, but anyway, I can't remember it. I'm sorry I disagree with A.B. and he's an oldster too, but nobody's convinced me. I don't think they can.
The average age to town is over 60 something, 65.
Yeah, but the young, young people are the ones who are all for it, rah rah rah.
The other point that I made, Jay.
That's right. Bart, is it Bart Corridge, Corv?
I'm good. Oh, I didn't stand up for questions, I'm sorry. I'm new to this. Only time I was over here was with that little.
It's okay. So you're good. All right.
Any questions?
No. Kathy Westley?
And I, I spoke with you previously on the subject and talked about my concerns, which have been echoed here tonight. I, I'd say hear, hear to what Sarah and Russell have shared, and so will spare you repeating myself and what they've already said so well. But thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you. All right. That completes the people for and against that are at the meeting. Jay, would you like to address any of the concerns?
I'm just trying to think of the, all the concerns for the businesses that are already here. Bringing an extra business in that creates energy, creates marketing strategies and, pulls people to this area, can only help all of us. There was the same kind of consensus when I came in with Northern Neck Burger years ago. All the established businesses were concerned I'm gonna chew on their, their profits or their money that they're just making. What I found is by me coming, everybody that wanted to be there stepped it up and we all got better. And if you see Kilmarnock today than when it started 10 years ago, it's a totally different place. I'm not saying that's me per se, but I was very intrigued with the River Realm, with the inception of that. I'm just, how can, you know, I did a big commercial, I won a big commercial back in the day and marketed the town and the area. I'm all about pulling people in. I've got some really great ideas for a bit, not that if they want them or they don't, but there's things that can really help drive. And by not having more businesses come to help other businesses not feel unappreciated, I'm not really sure what the word is, but doesn't help the growth of your town. If you want to grow and you want to develop and keep moving forward, I think you've got to be open and, you know, change, you know, in the direction that's gonna create more energy and vibrancy to your town. And I love it, I think it's beautiful. I'm not trying to turn it all upside down, but I think there's things that can be done to really enhance it, the experience when a customer or a potential person comes into town that they say, hey, you know, this was an awesome weekend I had here, maybe this is where I want to settle. You know, what, what turns that point from just a vacation to, hey, this is a destination? So the more, I believe competition is always good. It sharpens the knife, it makes everybody tighter, makes people better, be more hospitable, stay open later, more hours. When I got to, you know, Kilmarnock, there weren't that many places that were gonna be open on Sunday. Now, there's a get a meal for breakfast there where it was never like that before. I'm open on Sunday, I see the difference. But you have to have somebody who's willing to do that, to push others to do that. Not physically, but just, hey, look, they're making money, why can't I? No reason other than you just gotta do it. So I'm a hustler in that respect. Because I love being open. I just love the, the interaction and, and taking care of others and feeding them and giving them a vibe. It's just fun. So there's lots of things we can do. I think that was the biggest one to, to talk about, some of the other things, yeah, menu, lighting, you know, more comfort for some, but ultimately, I'm not for everybody. I would like to be as many people as possible, but I'm not gonna, I don't sell McDonald's burgers, I'm not a fast food, I'm, you know, I'm a different niche. I sell lobster rolls and I sell a lot of them. They're delicious. High in meat, really quality. I'm just kidding, I, I, whatever, I could go on and on, obviously. But I can work with others, I, I feel the concern, and I like to bring everybody up, myself, you know, tide rises, all, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any staff response to any? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing at this point?
So moved.
Opportunity to question him now or not?
No, no.
Second? Second? I'm sorry, who? March, motion to close?
I did.
Okay. Marjorie, we got a second?
Beth.
All right. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? All right, Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Alana?
I'm closing the public hearing.
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes.
Larry Chuning?
Yes.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
All right. Moving on. Let's see. All right. Now, we need the motion to approve, it's recommended by, Harb signed off on it, planning commission approved. And so I think the way the motion should be stated is to move to approve the Small Town Burger.
Mr. Mayor? Let's read it now.
Well, I was gonna, what?
The motion?
Yeah, that, I need somebody to read that, Marjorie.
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve 2023 dash special use permit application 05, Jay Wolfson slash Small Town Burger, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report before us this evening.
Okay. We have a second?
A second.
All right. Motion is moved in a second and out of the discussion. Comments from Sandy? Do you have a comment?
Well, I, I don't know how I can deny this if he's met all, everything. It's, I mean, I don't see how I can deny it.
Okay. Mary?
No discussion.
Okay. Alana?
I just know my.
You can, you can say something.
Okay. Because I have a real estate license and Isabelle Whorsley holds it, I have been advised by the town attorney that I am to abstain from voting.
Yep.
All right. Marjorie, comment?
I have a comment, but it's not about Small Town Burger. It's about the fact of our comprehensive plan, our zoning, we wouldn't be here doing this if this all was streamlined. I don't have a problem with anybody coming in and doing business and bringing people here, so.
Okay. Beth?
I have nothing to say.
Mary?
Well, you know what?
I would be surprised if.
I want to first, Sarah, I don't know you're back there or not, but.
Sarah?
I want to thank you and.
There she is.
And all the restaurant owners for what you all do for Urbana. I think it amounts to, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, $150,000 a year in mealstubs.
Right.
We could not be doing a great deal of what we are doing if it hadn't been for you.
Yep.
I don't want to hurt you and I hope I'm not gonna hurt you. But part of our charge as council members is to keep this little town of 400 and some people, three miles off the beaten trail. We got a county that's, nothing wrong with what they're doing, but they're pushing commerce as much as they can to the corners, Saluda, Cook's Corner, Little Gistil, Hardfield, Deltsville. That's what's happening. This to me is something that I probably would have thought of was okay anyway. And I, it's out of the box. And part of, and I've talked about this, you've heard the out of the box thing before from me, but we need to look for creative ways to look not one year down the road, not five years down the road, but 20, 30, and 40, and 50, so we can continue to be an incorporated town. And I see this as an out of the box type of thing that I'm gonna vote for. But thank you for all you do.
And I also, Sarah, want to say, I remember back in COVID that, you know, you brought food down and left on my doorstep. And went out of your way so many times. And I don't want to hurt you, but I don't see where we have any other way to vote.
I don't, I don't think we are, but.
No.
I hope not, but I don't think we are.
But we, we love and appreciate you.
We do.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I agree with everything Larry just said. And I reflect back on Mike Sheffield's statement, because I know you went through hell trying to get stuff through and you and I had discussions about it at the time. And, and, you know, God love you for, you know, going back and, and trying and, you know, it didn't, it didn't work out. But the, the, you know, the truth is that this town is sort of a food destination and the different kinds of things that we can do to get different ideas in here, I think, helps everybody. Because when you come in, if you see one thing, you may come back for the other thing. And that's the advantage of, that's the reason we do oyster, well, there's all kinds of reasons to do the Oyster Festival, but the truth is that, and, and I've gotten verification from Sarah on this, people that come in and see her restaurant during Oyster Festival, they say, well, you know what, this isn't that far from home, I can do it. And, and we have to be inventive about how we expand our opportunities. And, and the council for sure shouldn't be in the position of trying to pick winners and losers. I think that's where we really get ourselves boxed into a corner where we're gonna end up in a spot that isn't what we want to be doing. So anyhow, anybody else have any further discussions? Time for a vote. All right. Marjorie Austin?
You know, I, I, pass me up for right now.
Beth Justice?
I'm gonna say yes.
Larry Chuning?
Yes.
I say yes. Alana Courtney has abstained. Mary Hansen?
I say yes.
Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Marjorie, you want to be on the record, abstain?
You know, you, when you're on council, you're, you're not legal, you're, you're not a lawyer. So what you have to do is for those who voted for us to be here and do what's best for the town, is you basically lead with a motion. Because you want what is best for the town. I love Sarah. I think she's amazing.
We all do.
And just as Larry said, you know, I don't, I don't want anything to hurt her, but I've, I've, I've got all the emails, I've got all the phone calls, I've got all these people standing in front of me. And it seems like I'm just gonna have to say yes.
Motion passes six and one abstention. All right. Thank you for that. Thank everybody for their input.
Are they brothers?
Yes.
Look alike.
Yes.
All right. That's Small Town Burger.
That just killed me.
All right.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. We won't destroy it.
Please don't.
Absolutely not.
Work well with all the restaurants.
Yes, please.
We ask.
Be a good partner.
Just, Jay, just make sure, Jay, Jay, if you, if you don't mind, just make sure that, you know, Something Different Portside, everybody is part of everything. You know, because that's.
Work together.
They've been the backbone of this, they've kept us where we are. Sarah had to close down for a little while, but she came back and, you know.
Look, I've, I've dived, Sarah.
I do, I do seven and Saturday, I have food trucks, I understand. Sarah's the first one I went to to say, hey, this is what I want to do and I'm bringing, want to bring food trucks. And she was all about it. When a food truck backed out, she, she, she brought food. So.
Okay.
That's all.
I got you.
Moving on. Thanks.
Everybody, I want to, when the whole town does well, I'm gonna do well. I mean, that's it, we all do it together.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I need a motion to enter public hearing to consider ordinance 2024-01 regarding.
So moved. I'm sorry, can we wait? Can we wait until people cleared? Thanks.
I want to hear you.
Yeah, see, that, you'd have to, you know, abstain, recuse yourself on that one.
Um, the recordings, the, mics are on.
I was aware. Moving on. We entertain a motion for discussing the ordinance for bad check fees.
So moved.
And I need a second.
Second.
Motion moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote for a bad check fee. Not, not $50. $50.
I think it was 15.
I didn't vote to support.
Okay, we, we gotta move on. Motion is moved and seconded. Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Alana Courtney?
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Chuning?
No.
Larry, that vote is just to go into the meeting.
The meeting.
It goes to the public hearing.
It's not for the ordinance.
All right, yes.
It would have passed anyway, so we're moving on. All right, presentation by the staff.
Where is it, say $50? I'm not seeing that.
Under 2-5.1, bottom third.
It's all the way at the back.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The purpose of this hearing is to, for the presence, there's an ordinance for the town to collect fees for checks returned as insufficient funds. But it sets a fee well below the allowable amount of the Code of Virginia. Our current fee was like $20. That $20 does not cover what it costs the town to recoup that bad check fee. The other financial institutions themselves charge us for someone giving us a bad check. So it is my recommendation as the town treasurer that we go ahead and use the guidance of the ordinance for the Code of Virginia. And they say that it should not exceed $50. And so that I'm not standing before you again in the future to increase it because banks increased their fees and now we're at a negative to collect, you know. And, and it's not a huge problem, but we do need to be protected so that at least we as the town are not losing any fees or funds, I should say, because someone gave us an insufficient funds check. So it's the staff's recommendation that we, excuse me, I gotta tickle, that we proceed and adopt this.
Can I ask a question?
Do we have, yeah, we'll get to that in a second. So that's a presentation by, yes, now you can ask. Go ahead, get your question.
How many of, of bad checks, I mean, what's the percentage that you would say?
It's very, very low. Do I need to go back up there?
I mean, most of the time, you don't get anything.
I'm sorry?
The majority of the time, you don't.
Correct. Correct.
So the $50 will be, won't really matter because you're not gonna get anything anyway.
You will get a few here and there. But when we did, we actually lost money because of the bank fees. They charge us because someone. And then you also got to tally into that, thank you so much, you need to tally into that. The time it takes me and the extra processing of mailing letters, stamps, letters, envelopes, and time, that all adds up.
How much does the bank charge us?
Premise bank charges 10 right now.
Us, they charge us 10?
They charge us $10.
Okay.
You will get a few here and there, um, but when we did, we actually lost money because of the bank fees. They charge us because someone, and then you also got to tally into that, thank you so much, you need to tally into that. The time it takes me and the extra processing of mailing letters, stamps, letters, envelopes, and time, that all adds up.
How much does the bank charge us?
Premise bank charges 10 right now.
Us, they charge us 10?
They charge us $10.
Okay.
Okay, and so, and we're currently charging 20. But you have to do several letters.
Phone calls.
Phone calls, so staff time is taken up.
Um, I, there's also time to go back into the system and reverse those payments. And then that, by doing that, I need to write explanations, and then there's paperwork involved, because I need to print all that to put in the general ledger file.
Right.
So it is honestly
So this is, so this is, the, the bad check fee, which currently is $10, but there's also at least an hour of your time for each bad check?
Back and forth and all, yes.
Okay.
Our fee is 20, the bank's is 10.
Right, but in terms of staff time, we've got every bit of 30 bucks an hour tied up. As a minimum.
Larry had a good point, if they're writing you a bad check, they're probably not gonna pay the $50 either.
Right, but, but every once in a while, you know, it's a slot machine.
The check bounces, the real estate's not paid, I left the courthouse this past week, I filed the leads. So you don't want to pay them, I have another avenue. And I'm not being a hard butt, but I'm just saying, you know, you have your responsibilities.
Right.
And let's face it, if someone came in and they were on really hard times, or it was a bank error or whatever, we have a heart and we will work with those folks, so it's, exceptions, I'm sure, correct me if I'm wrong, could be made. But it's there to protect us in the meantime.
And it'll be advertised, so if someone writes a check, they know ahead of time.
Right, I think you're less prone to write a bad check if the fee is so high, don't you? I don't know if it's a disincentive or not, and again, how large a check? Is a large check for unpaid taxes, or is it a, you know, a
$10 check.
Yeah, a $10 check, yeah.
Yeah, that's
So, I mean, there are a lot of variables.
But still, the, the cost we're trying to recoup is
The processing cost.
The processing costs for the town.
Right.
And whenever we can at least break even on the process, we should probably try. And we, you know, we wrote it, 50 is what's allowable, correct?
Correct.
And so, um, we can always reduce that fee without going through things, but we can't raise it without another vote on an ordinance, correct?
You can't go above $50.
Right.
Because that's the cap by the state.
But we could say, if we set it at 50, we could drop it to 35.
Yes, you could always
At any, at any time.
That doesn't require a meeting.
It doesn't require re-advertising.
It doesn't require re-advertising.
Because you're lowering your fee as opposed to increasing it.
But it still would require a vote?
It would still require a vote.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not just something Michelle could see this person?
Or, or we could pass it for 35 now.
I would be more willing to do that. I, you know, I understand where you're coming from, Michelle. Uh, but, I'm constantly thinking about taxpayers and, and why do people bounce checks?
Because they don't have money.
Yeah.
Well, they either don't have money or they make a mistake, I don't know, but we've had real good luck with, with folks paying real, not so much personal property, but real estate taxes. And if somebody were to accidentally do something, and people, you know, have we had a bounced check as far as real estate this year?
This past one that we did have, it turned out to be, the last one was a bank error, which I addressed last time.
Yeah, you talked
And then the bank waived the fee, we didn't charge, we didn't even charge them the $20 on the books, because they immediately write it they're wrong, so
There was no loss.
Right.
It's just in my, my mind, being friendly, being a friendly community, that type of thing.
I just want it there, Larry, so that when I have to spend the umpteen hours trying to track it down, and all that time is exhausted doing so, at least we can recoup that.
Oh, with 35, with 35, we're To me, that's more community friendly than a $50.
Costs $39 to put a stop payment on a check.
Explain to me that.
I think she's trying to keep you up with the time.
Yes, exactly.
With the cost, what the costs are.
Yeah.
I mean, at, at least, we're losing money. And what I'm asking is, when we get paid, at least we could recoup that one.
But, you know, if, if, if Mary actually makes a mistake and she calls me or I call her and she's like, oh my gosh, and comes in and makes it right and replaces the check immediately, that I do not have to do all that extra work, we don't have to charge her that $50.
Right.
But if I gotta track Mary down for days and weeks, then I think Mary should have to pay, sorry, Mary, I'm picking on you.
I'm fine with that, Michelle.
Don't make her call you again.
That's my reasoning, that's my reasoning, Larry.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Providing, you know, if we would do it that way and encourage you to do it, I can't
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, if Make anybody do anything, but we'd encourage you to do it.
I think that's very fair, too.
And I guess I could vote for it. But, I, I think we need to be as friendly to the customers.
Oh, yeah.
And folks, particularly folks that have, you know, they make a mistake, but they've been loyal forever, you know.
Right.
I've waived a lot of those fees back in the day, so, I mean, I, I honestly get it.
All right, well, I think we're on the same page.
Any, I, we're still in the public hearing, aren't we, so?
I think you're still in the staff presentation.
Uh huh. Right.
I think we just need to come out of the meeting.
Okay, um, any public comment? Did anybody sign up?
You've got the
You've got the board.
There's no, these are, uh, let's see, if this one, that's Marnie Hart, no.
I'm guessing no, because no one's standing.
Bad checks.
Can make the motion to, uh, close the public hearing?
Okay, all right, so, nobody for or against? So I guess, motion to close?
Marjorie made it.
Marjorie made it.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to leave the public hearing. Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Alana Courtney?
Yes.
I say yes.
Larry Chuning? Yes. Didn't vote no on that one.
I can change my mind.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
All right, now, would someone like to make a motion? Uh, oh, no action can be taken tonight.
You cannot take action.
Okay.
No, we just have the hearing.
Okay, all right.
I will make a motion to
Just so people understand, that's by state law, if you are increasing a fee outside of your budget process, you have to allow a certain amount of time before you can actually take the vote.
Okay.
Be wary.
All right.
Is there any, is there any public comment? Did anybody sign up for regular public comment?
No, no regular public comment? Any council comment? I just have one thing to say for the people that are still here and for council that haven't heard this. I had a fairly good conversation at this point, months ago, with the town manager of Kilmarnock, and I have never had anybody be so positive about a business owner as with Susan? With the Wolfsons. I mean, she was just gushing, and it was like, you guys are crazy if you don't do this.
Well, the owner of Portside Grill, Will Bart, was here, if you noticed that. He got it real quick, but I think eventually they will see how it's gonna work out, I think it's gonna
But anyhow, all right, announcements?
I'd like to make an announcement, please, keep, everybody just keep their thoughts and prayers with Lucille Redman.
Yeah.
She broke her hip and was also bit by a dog, and last word I got, she was still in the hospital in Richmond.
Yeah.
So if everybody could keep her in your prayers.
Yep.
And now, motion to adjourn.
I have a comment.
We're on announcements, we're not on comments.
Just like, if you have not seen it on our Facebook or website, or I've shared it out, the 2024 Banner Program has hit, the dropdown deadline is April 12th. Um, I'm working, same company, new representative, you know, in the times of this world, everything is so slow. He has informed me that I need to guarantee them to be up for the 4th of July, I had to do the cutoff for April 12th. It's gonna be the same price as last year, and we will also do the dedication service again as we have in the past. So, if anybody's interested, tell them to come in, or they can go on our website and print this off, which also has the information that I need for on the banner, and photos that can either be emailed, or they can bring a photo here and we'll scan it in high resolution.
Why, why isn't it Memorial Day? Why is it, we're in the middle of the summer?
So, the push is always to start it on Memorial Day, and we started a little bit later, the initial year. So what's kind of cool about it is, we put them up for the 4th of July. They fly from the 4th of July up to Oyster Festival. So this half of the room is on Virginia Street, this half of the room is on Cross Street. We take them down, but then in May, when they go back up, we switch them. So then everybody gets a better, they get mixed up on different streets. That also puts us kind of in the middle of summer, which is a nice time to do the dedication. The new ones go up for the 4th of July, the old ones get surrendered or returned, I shouldn't say surrendered, are returned to the purchaser at the ceremony. So it breaks the year in half, and that way we get to move them. And people like that. Okay, and wholeheartedly, the, this will be year three, so the banner itself will be a different banner, because, to make it different than last year's.
Good job, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right, thank you.
Good thanks, thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Billy seconded.
I third.
All right, Marjorie?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes, for me.
Beth will make it tonight.
Mary?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Nice, excellent, good job.